I forget to state the obvious. We, it's obvious to me, I mean. I don't build sites near other towers. I don't build sites near water tanks unless there's a reason to. If there's a big building, we just tell Verizon, go in the building, go on the water tank, or go on the existing tower. We're not in the business of building 110 and towers as much as we can avoid it. So, we share your concern from a business model standpoint of not having an unnecessary proliferation of towers. There are no tall structures in this area at all. And that's why we're proposing it. There's no point of convenience here. It's not such that there are other options. And we're simply choosing to do this for economic reasons. That is not the case.
Right. Actually, you touched on a couple of things that were brought up by some folks that I want to make sure, I want to reinforce a little bit. You mentioned that you're not rezoning, which I agree with. So, the parcel that you're going on is Zone AR. I think the property owner, their whole parcel is, their zoning is split. Is that correct, Mr. Pizzati? I can't find it in the packet. It may not be defined. But do you know how deep the AR goes? How deep the property is? How deep the AR goes? And how deep the conservation goes? If you don't, that's fine.
The division on page two.
The division that you see on page two is pretty approximate based on what our DIS and zoning map has. So, it might be off by a couple hundred feet or so, 10, 50 feet, but it's relatively, that's the cutoff right there. And I believe actually it is split into two parcels. So, that parcel line is actually...
So, it's actually a parcel. Okay, all right. So, there are a number of packets out in the audience. If you look on page two of the Carlisle-Warkman review, it shows an aerial photograph of the parcel that this is going on, which is Zone AR, which is not being changed and is not a consideration here tonight. And yes, something that you said, Mr. Styles, that it's allowed in the zoning ordinance. Wireless communication facilities are listed as a special land use in agricultural zoning, which would be under C, C 2. V. Mr. Pizzati, can you give a brief description of what a special land use is and what that entails, please?
Yes. So, a special land use is essentially a permitted use in the zoning districts. However, they're subject to more rigorous requirements. So, usually special land uses are identified uses by the municipality that might have more intense effects on property than, say, a single-family home. So, when you have a wireless communication tower, there's a lot of regulations and safety features that need to be incorporated with a lot of different outside department review of this. So, based on that, that's why it's listed as special land use, because it's not so much a simple construction as just a home. And that's with every zoning district. So, as the uses get more intense, you'll most likely see those be classified as special land uses rather than permitted uses. So, that also allows us as the township to, again, provide comments and allow the public to comment on these types of uses so that there's full transparency when these plans are being reviewed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pizzati. I appreciate you defining that. Hopefully, that provides some background in general relative to special uses, but specifically related to this case. Is there anyone else on the commission that, again, I've got a number of questions and comments and whatnot, but I think they're more related to the site plan review. Any questions or comments related to this as a special land use? All right. Trustee, anything? Sorry, Mr. Styles, I just want to open my notes one more time. Given there are no more questions or comments related to the special land use, is there anything else that you want to add relative to this as a special land use or in the site plan? There will be a lot more questions related to that.
I have to discuss those. And I just want to, again, reiterate for the record, like we said, we've sought out a location that we feel very strongly complies with the ordinance. Again, if my willingness to work with you on the site plan, we'll get to that part.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Styles.
Thank you.
I do have one follow-up. So, I guess when you made the earlier statement about the location of this, we'll have coverage for two miles. Well, then, why couldn't the tower be put somewhere out away from the residents and it would still give coverage to people that you say within that area need coverage?
Yeah, that's a good question. Because you have to center it. You have to center it so that that radius is covering as many people as possible. We shifted, say, a mile east because there might be a commercial land use there that might seem like a better location for it on its face from a non-network perspective, just from, say, a land use perspective. The problem is that you still have a significant gap in that other, in that mile you shifted it. You're going to wind up with some, five years from now, someone's going to come back in front of you looking to put a second tower up. Does that make sense? And the gap that you created by trying to shift it where it worked for land use, but it doesn't work for the network. This is the way to have the minimum number of towers. And again, I said this before, this community has done a tremendous job of having a very small number of towers with a maximum number of tenants and users on each one. And frankly, this site is very equally spaced, has consistent spacing from the existing sites, such that I am very confident that future users will locate on this location as well.
Thank you, Mr. Styles. That brings up one other item that I want to make sure we clearly answer. I do have a question related to this that I want to address as part of the site plan review. But that's the idea of multiple carriers being on the tower. I believe in your submission, you indicate, well, it may not be your submission, I don't know, and you may have said it tonight, but whether you have a contract with Verizon or a commitment, you want you to tower up, whatever it is, that you have space on the tower, I believe in your submission, for four carriers?
Yeah. So, not only is it space, we pre-engineer the steel that we ordered to be able to handle four tenants on the structure. The foundation is, has enough concrete in it now hypothetically, should you approve it, that it will be, nothing will need to be changed with the foundation. There's enough space at the base of the structure for to house the ground equipment, all of that. The utilities, the conduits that we're going to put in for power and fiber, will all be able to have multiple tenants. There's nothing, literally nothing, that will have to be done to the tower, other than the tenants, say, T-Mobile or AT&amp;T come along. They would literally just install their equipment, and that's it. There's nothing that we need to do to amend or enhance the site for them.
So, you mentioned earlier, like, it would be a third-party vendor coming out to service it twice a year. Is there a window, a concentrated window of when you make that offering for those other providers? Or does it just, the word gets out, and like, hey, well, T-Mobile, I want to put something there, and then it's... What I'm trying to get to is the traffic that would be coming down this other road that is now in between homes.
So, our maintenance, you wouldn't even notice them. It's a pickup truck. It's somebody in a light-duty truck coming by to spray something down, maybe for weeds, make sure the signage is at the gate, just with emergency contact information and our site name and number, is still there. Very basic things. They're not doing work. They're not mowing the lawn or anything like that. It's extremely basic, and they just have a checklist to make sure certain things are in order at the site. And if not, then they would let us know so we could remedy it. As for the other companies, like I said, we market these things. So, it's very complex and dynamic. The way existing sites get leased up, is the term we use for multiple tenancy, is it can take time. Because even if they know about a site, let's just say T-Mobile, for example. Let's say they love the location. They want to go on it. They have to have budget for it. And all of these companies have thousands of sites going on at one time over the country. So, any given market within the whole country might have budget for, say, 50 sites in 2026 for them to build or install on, if it's what we call a co-location, putting tenants on an existing structure. Well, they might have, their network engineers might say, there's 2,000 places in Michigan where T-Mobile would love to have a site, but they don't have limitless resources. So, they have to prioritize based on the number of users, the amount of road traffic, other factors that impact where to best spend their resources as efficiently as they can to service the greatest number of customers as efficiently as possible. So, while I can assure you that we market this very effectively, T-Mobile's on multiple sites in mind, for as an example, I cannot in any way speculate when they might come, okay? But there's no traffic. There's no, we don't do a dog and pony show and bring 25 trucks in from T-Mobile and AT&amp;T and say, hey, I've got this wonderful tower. Do you want to, you don't want to go on it. It's very passive. You would never know. It all happens in the background.
Are there any other questions or comments on special land use?
I guess I got one, maybe two, I guess. How many towers have you, as your company and you've built throughout the years, I guess?
We have, like I said, 27, 28 active construction as we stand here tonight. I have, this year's overall build plan is 52 towers. Next year's build plan is 82.
How many, has any of them failed, like mechanically or fallen down like that?
No, sir. We had a F-1 tornado go right past the site of mine in Uniontown, Pennsylvania, southwest PA, about three or four years ago. And the worst thing that happened was a tree fall on our fence, and we had to reconstruct one side of the fence. And that site has three tenants on it, and not one of them went down at the time.
Thank you, Mr. Styles.
Thank you.
All right. Is at this point, can I adjourn a motion on the special land use?
The commissioners. If I may, commissioners, I've been reviewing the special land use standards, and in my review, you'll see that I've noted that all of the 18, all of the 19 standards have been met, say, for the maintenance plan and the open weed fence, which is a site plan consideration that is actually listed in the special land use criteria. So, while these two criteria are not currently being met at this exact second, this is something that can be addressed during the site plan review phase. So, based on how the ordinance is written, I would recommend approval of the special land use at the very least, since all those requirements are...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pizzati. Well, I, I'll go ahead and make a motion that, this is something, Mr. Pizzati, we don't have any case numbers here. We just have, so anyway, for reference. Make a motion to approve the special land use for the cell tower, proposed wireless communications tower at 9675 Willow Road, as it meets the requirements of the special land use in the AR zoning district in the zoning ordinance, and is outlined by the planners' report and the 19 items that are delineated as part of the review of the special land use. Is there support? There's support by trustee Gifford, rural call Albers.
What are we vote?
The special land.
Okay. So, I vote no. And I do this because I had a visceral reaction, and maybe I'm just going rogue here. I'm new to the planning commission. But I had a visceral reaction when you talked about the government and the responsibility that Verizon has to fulfill the government's dictator mandates to coverage. You were dealing with people here. I agree with the need that there are gaps in coverage, but as you've heard from almost everyone here, they don't move out here for cellphone coverage. I don't think it's a great area. I think it's too much in a residential location. And I also, just thinking about the future development, I do think people, there was a realtor in this township that showed a house on McCrone, and the people backed out of it. They were concerned about living next to the solar field. McCrone and Willow is where the big solar is going in. Okay? So, I do have, I share the residents' concerns about their property values. And I just think that a different, I mean, I'm no engineer. I just think a different location could be met. And I, so for those reasons and the health concerns, I think that we, just like today with the Health and Human Services decision to pull finally dies from foods and getting rid of what's bad for us, what they've done in foreign countries for years and what some of the residents here provided studies on, the U.S. hasn't caught up to a lot of what's going on in other areas. And so, for these reasons, I vote no.
Hamel?
No.
Gifford?
Yes.
Spence?
Vote no.
Well, I'm going to vote yes, and simply for the reason that it is allowed special land use in the AR in the zoning ordinance. We've had a number of things that have come through the township that we may or may not like, we may or may not want, but they're allowed by the zoning ordinance. When we denied them, the township got sued. And if it's something that we don't want, then we need to revise the zoning ordinance. And it's allowed in the ordinance, so I vote yes. Unfortunately, the motion fails three to two. All right, Mr. Pizzati, where do we go from here as far as the site plan review? It's on the agenda. It's a business item. Do we call it? I'm inclined to call it a business item, because there's other things that I want to discuss as part of this.
It's still on the agenda, so we should still review it as is within accordance with the ordinance, so.
All right. We'll move on to item 7B, which is site plan review for the proposed wireless communications tower at 9675 Willow Road. As part of your review, are there things related to site plan review that we haven't covered?
Pretty much everything's been covered to our expense. The project's meeting all area with heightened setback requirements from the ordinance. Surrounding land uses are outlined on page 3 of my reports. With the failure of patient site arrangement, they're arranged centrally on the leased parcel. No concerns there. Again, with parking loadings, it isn't a public use. There is no requirement for public parking. It'll be specifically for the private parking of the maintenance crew, as already stated. With site access and circulation, work to be done in Washtenaw County driveway, which is Washtenaw County along Willow Road, that will require the road permission review and approval. As well as site access and circulation, I would suggest before these plans to the township engineer and fire department for review to make sure they're comfortable with access to the site. No utilities are proposed, rather than telephone and electrical be connected from the adjacent sites. Again, with landscaping, with surrounding trees, the planning commission has the ability to grant a waiver to use existing ventilation to satisfy those requirements, which I would recommend you guys do. Again, with lighting, there's only two low-wide LED lights on sites. There won't be any glare that would spill on the adjacent properties. And again, signage is only emergency contact information of FCC call sign. No reviews required there. And with no structures, floor plans and elevations are not even divided. So, based on that, you'll see on page nine are conditions of approval that we receive with the site plan. However, with the special land use being denied, I would suggest, instead of approval, we should table this for a later meeting once more information be obtained from the outcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pizzati.
Commissioner, I just briefly submit, I'm more than happy to go over the site plan. We do intend, even after the disappointing vote, we do intend to proceed with the project as best we can. So, whether that means now or at another meeting, I do intend to continue forward. So, if you want to go through it, I'm happy to. And don't we do it another time?
No, it's an item of business on the agenda, so I want to address it tonight.
Understood. We're still committed to the project.
We can see your motion just to remove the agenda item from...
No, I don't see a need for that. So, I've got a number of questions and comments, as I mentioned earlier, related to a lot of this. I'm happy to open, but if there are other members of the commission that have questions and would like to start, I'm happy to open it up.
Just to make it official, in regards to the, we've got electrical, we've got fiber going, then you've got a 1,000-pound tank that got brought up, the propane. What is that going to be utilized for?
So, the generator is only utilized if there's an interruption of commercial power. So, if there's a storm and a tree falls on an overhead line half a mile down the road from the site, it interrupts commercial power, that thing will kick on automatically. It will also test once a week very briefly.
Do you have the decibels of that?
I can provide that. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I can definitely get that. I can get a cut sheet to Mr. Pizzati for the generator proposed. That's absolutely doable. And further, despite the vote on the special land use, as a condition of potential future approval, I would even be willing to put as low a decibel generator on there as possible. We don't own the generator, to be clear. Our tenants do. But I can make it clear that that was necessary for a subsequent approval later on, if that's something that's important.
Chris Hammel, do you have anything else?
No.
All right. So, I'll give balance to my questions for you, Mr. Styles. Again, we talked about the number of carriers that was in your proposal as being up to four. However, on your site plan...
I think it shows three.
Yeah, it shows three. And I just, so the question I have is, inside your proposing, is it a 100-foot-square fenced area? Is there room?
No. So, it's easy to confuse that. So, if you look at page two, we lease 100 feet by 100 feet. We don't fence that much in. We fence in a smaller area to be less impactful. It's also more cost-effective. And if we need to increase it for some reason, we can. We still get to do it on any site. What we're finding in the industry is the ground equipment is getting smaller and smaller. They're putting more of the equipment, so to speak, up top by the antennas. There's small boxes and equipment they put up there. And there's no longer the ground, what used to call shelters, the stone aggregate buildings, per se, with the door. Those no longer are used by any of the carriers. It's all outdoor cabinets on concrete slab. It basically looks like two or three refrigerators next to each other. Also, just kind of anecdotally, there's really three main carriers right now: Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, in no particular order. DISH is operating the Boost Network, but there's a lot of uncleares, a lot of uncleares about what their future may be. There's some stuff going on with the FCC with them. But we still design for four carriers, but three is really, really where the industry's at in a lot of ways.
You're proposing not to have landscaping. You're talking about the density that the tree cover and whatnot. So, you're leasing this 100-square-foot area, and then, sorry, I may have misinterpreted that, that then the fenced-in area is smaller. Obviously, the fence would go up after the monopole. But are you able to erect that pole in that 100-foot-square area so you're not clearing more trees beyond that?
That's correct. Yeah, they'll bring a crane in on the drive and just pick it up, put the three or four sections of steel on the anchor bolts that will be protruding from the concrete, that will have cured at that point, a certain period of time. And they don't need minimal, we don't need to clear trees just to get access, if that enters your question.
Yes, that's what I'm after.
We take tree removal very seriously for two reasons. One, I'm a former wilderness ranger myself. I love trees. I live in the country myself. So, I, just as a corporate ethos, we don't like to remove trees. Secondarily, there's very strict regulations from our NEPA, National Environmental Protection Act 1968. Because we're federally licensed undertaking, we have to comply to a very strict NEPA review and guidelines. And tree removal is something that's very sensitive to that, particularly with species habitat removal. The Indiana longhorned bat is very important around here. We have probably 12 or 14 projects right now that are waiting for a magical date in the fall when we are able to remove trees, because it's that sensitive. So, tree removal is taken very, very seriously.
Yeah, they removed 20 acres of trees for the solar project, even though there were bats. And when I asked Eagle about that question, they said they liked your answer. They wait for the bats or whatever other wildlife to migrate, and then they take their homes down. Which leads me to, are you doing an environmental impact study if this moves forward?
Every site has one. And if it's a condition of approval or later date, I'd be more than happy to provide that for file. And to be clear really quick, for everybody in the audience to know, I think it's important, that NEPA review, a biologist is sent out, an archaeologist is sent out. There are very extensive amount of specialties who, they all come out at different times, and they review the property to make sure there's no negative impact, whether it be an impact on species, whether it might be on archaeological, meaning that they might find an artifact that leads them to believe there might be historical significance on the property. Obviously, the prototypical example is the Indian arrowhead, but it's more than that. They could see evidence of a barn nearby that was historically significant. There could be evidence of some sort of a, you know, we're too far north for it, but, you know, conflict in the American Civil War, things like that. They look at a myriad of factors before recommending that the site does not have a negative impact. It's a very big deal. We take it very seriously. We cannot proceed on a project that doesn't have all the clearances from those different specialties. The State Historic Preservation Office has to sign off. There's a whole litany of things that we do for due diligence.
So, the generator was one that I had a question on relative to size. I didn't know if this is more of like a commercial, you know, water-cooled pipe unit or smaller, like an air-cooled unit, like residential style. And you may or may not have, that's something...
I'll get it for you. I'll get you the cut sheet.
...we're going to want, and also making sure that it would adhere to the noise ordinance.
Absolutely.
I don't remember the section, but it's in the zoning ordinance.
I assure you that we will make sure it complies. Yes.
And as far as the propane tank, I mean, frankly, a 1,000-pound tank isn't that big. Have you ever buried a propane tank?
No. So, here's, on the generators, how it works is, going back to the environmental review, propane is, or is, so diesel is an option. Propane is an option. Natural gas hardline from the Pobrecito is another option. And each one has sort of different uses and places where it makes the most sense. But no, we never bury a tank, is the short answer. I think that was the question, right?
Yeah, that was the question. And I know they can be. I've never seen one buried myself.
I've never seen it in the wireless world. I'm not saying it's never been done. I've never seen it in 25 years.
Yeah. I don't know where, how extensive the natural gas coverage here is in the township.
Natural gas is pretty rare, frankly. It's not, it's not the go-to solution.
Yeah. Well, that's fine. My point is, I drive by, there's a house here on River Drive, which isn't in this township. And literally, just in the last few weeks, I've driven by it. There's a propane tank in the backyard, but it's in a stretch of road where there are very few houses. So, apparently, there's no natural gas. So, I mean...
There's a 4-inch natural gas line running right down Willow Road.
Sir, that's, neither here nor there. My point is, there are propane tanks everywhere in the countryside. A 1,000-pound tank, in my view, is not that big of a tank.
It's a very conventional size. It's a very conventional size. It sounds big on paper, it may look big on paper, but it's not, it's not.
I mean, any house that serves, that serves propane has at least a 1,000-pound tank.
It's not, it does make sense to have a truck loaded for less than that.
So, the utilities that you would bring into this are electrical and
Fiber.
Fiber, and they have to come up the easement for the road.
That's correct.
So, you're actually leasing the, the area that's shown, and then the, the access road is an easement?
That's correct. That's exactly correct.
Which gets me back to, actually, one of the, the first thing I had on my list was property owner agreement. Generally, on something like this, we would expect to see a letter signed by the property owner, or I think you mentioned you actually have a lease in place?
Yeah, I have no problem, we'll redact the financial terms, but I have no problem providing a redacted copy of the lease for the record, that's no problem.
Actually, I was just going to say that you can redact the financial terms for all I care.
Happy to do it.
Yeah, we just need something that shows.
We record them also, by the way. We record a memorandum, all, and the easement, so it's all, it's all full transparency. We need to preserve our legal right down the road also.
Correct.
Unintended, I guess.
Yeah, we would, I mean, we had a case last month.
Yeah, we record them every day, we have all memorated leases going out, and options going out of our office.
Okay. So, that would be, need to be something that we.
No, no issue at all, happy to do it.
Things that are also part of, so as I go down through here, part of this is because we're a small township, we don't have a full-time management department, we have a planning consultant, we don't have a building department, we use Washington County.
Well, I know, yeah.
We don't have building inspectors, we use Washington County. So, when we do this, I like to make sure that it's buttoned up, we set a plan, there aren't a lot of contingencies that are just noted in writing. One of those that we typically would see as part of any site plan approval would be Washington County Road Commission review and permit, and in my view, this is a commercial driveway, so I, I don't know, I assume that's how they would view it. I noticed that you do have a paved apron, I like seeing that for folks that are trying to get out on the road.
Sure.
And so, it's basically one page from Washington County that we generally get. Engineering review is also something that I'm surprised was not part of the packet for township engineering consultant.
With the township engineer view, that's something the township has to forward to the.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't.
Okay.
So, let me know really quick, but to mention, to be clear, when we file for zoning, we generally do a fairly, not minimal, but a much smaller reduced plan, set of plans, it's four to six pages maybe, depending on the complexity, the requirements in that jurisdiction. What we file for building permit, pretty much in any jurisdiction, is closer to 20 or 30 pages.
Sure.
We don't spend the time and effort, and frankly, the money also, to go to that level of detail until we know.